And and.
Thank you.
I was I was coming in. I'm doing all right. All day long.
I tested the audio on. Audio's on this.
Do you have control of it?
So should be good.
All right, good.
Yes, our.
So.
It's.
Yeah, I wouldn't be telling you that. I give that a look.
Well, welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of Greenville City Council. Good to have you with us. Please rise for invocation by Councilmember Will Brasington, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Will you pray with me, please? Dear Lord, we give you thanks for our many blessings. We give you the thanks as always for the opportunity to gather here today intent on doing the public's goodwill. We thank you so much for the hardworking men and women of the city of Greenville who each and every day provide for the quality of life and safety for residents and those who visit our wonderful city. As a council, we ask for your continued guidance so that we will be courageous and wise in the deliberations before us. And again, we thank you so much for all that we enjoy here in this city that we call home. It's in your name we offer this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Let's lead to the flag of the United States of America. And to the God who religious saints, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hey, you're a good crowd. That was great. I don't know, staff leading the way there. Sam, were you the one leaving that giving the extra energy? That was really, really good. That was great. A clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorthing.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brasington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stoll. Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have the minutes of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Stand approved as submitted. No objections. We have a few folks who signed up to speak to us. Remember, we have a three-minute rule. And after we hear from those folks, we have a presentation about our youth commission who are with us tonight. So first up is the, let's see, Mr. Farmer, you got the first three minutes.
Joe Lawrence with seven thousand. Way. Transparency. That's a goal that this city wants to have. We hear it very often. The ATX Commission is made up of seven members and only one is from the general public. They met on January thirtieth, March twenty-sixth, April first, and April ninth. The agenda states presentations of applications. No minutes are pushed. On May thirteenth, the commission presented funding recommendation to this council. We only know who applied since all but applied received funding. We do not know how much applicants asked for. We don't know how many heads and beds each applicant brings to the city. We cannot gauge if the allocation to the proposals are equal to the tax collected. I'm requesting you lay sixteen A on the table for a future vote. Hopefully, we can gain some clarification tonight on how these funds were allocated, but until the public sees and understands the process and has this chance to speak, a vote to approve should not occur. Since council rubber stamps these recommendations, the commission needs to be very transparent where four point one million dollars is dispersed. Look at these examples. The SEC Women's Basketball Tournament got thirty-one thousand dollars. The Society for Incentive Travel Excellence got thirty-five thousand dollars. Now, I was here for the Women's Basketball Tournament, and there was a lot of talent, and it was a good event. Did this other group bring that much? A confidential sporting event is going to get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That better be NFC Championship game if they're going to beat Times and Twins Basketball Tournament is. We have anywhere below. Is this proportional? Are these groups really bringing what they're getting? And until we have that, we would say no to this, and let's get an accounting. This commission needs, A, a detailed agenda, published minutes, and an accounting system. I'm asking you to lay this proposal on the table until public can see an accounting of their dispersions. Thank you.
Mr. Clarence Thornton.
Yes. Clarence Thornton. Mr. Clarence Thornton. I reside at one fourteen Dorfitt Street, Greenville, South Carolina.
We have a little problem with the clock hold. I just want to say, Clarence.
Yeah.
That'll reset you. Go ahead. Go ahead.
What I'm here to talk about is our West Greenville Community Center. I was at our West Greenville Community Center Association meeting. And I was informed that our roof is leaking. How is it in two thousand and twenty-four? When we talk about diversity, our children have to still be in a facility where the roof is still leaking. We had two hundred and seventy million dollars we talking about. But our roof is still leaking. It's been leaking for a long time. I don't understand why. They always say that we the first fire and the last hire. When it comes to money appropriation, they said we always get things last. We're talking about diversity, but we're still in the same condition. Last time we talked last week, they said our streets was last paid forty years ago. Some people can come here now. They're not even in the city two years, and their streets get paid. We have a long way to go. That's really bothers me as a minister. We just got through praying to God. We got through praying to Jesus. But Jesus spent most of his life dealing fighting for the poor. He fed the poor. Where does our fight for the poor? We didn't even really want to build a city because we run the poor up. Matter of fact, all we got to do is go to January sixteen, two thousand twenty-three. We honor Martin Luther King, but we really don't honor him and what he stands for. This lady says right here, you need to. Is running senior citizens out of their neighborhoods. Been there thirty, forty years. Because of price. So what we really saying is, you're because you're poor, you're not worthy to live downtown. We used to work for a housing. That's just a flexible tool. It's affordable if you're a millionaire. It's affordable if you got three hundred thousand. We don't ever really want to use the word low income because we don't want to let the city know we got problems. We got problems with homelessness. And like I said, I'm gonna end this with the Bible. Because on the end of day of judgment, that's what we all gonna have to face, God. We're gonna have to face God, and it's gonna leave this with this one. Blessed is he that consider the poor. There's a law that would deliver him in trouble. So are we really considering them? Because every day tomorrow night comes seeing us. And that's who we're gonna have to answer to. So we can really address it, but we got a problem, especially with West Greenville Center. And Jamie Wright will be coming in with the Jazz Festival, and I hate to see her.
Thank you. Miss, uh, Miss Craig. Vidella Craig. Vidella Craig. Sign up speak. Mr. Um, Brew. Dimitri Brew. Sir. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Dear councilmen and councilwomen, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Dimitri Paul. My, uh, we own properties in Haney Serene on Wakefield Street and on the corners of How on Wakefield Street next to the county redevelopment site. I was born in Ukraine, the Soviet Ukraine, where freedom was dream and not a tangible reality. I was very grateful to come to the United States close to twenty-five years ago and see land ownership and usage for all as something to be preserved and protected. We settled in Greenville and love this city. In an effort to create proposed land use map for rezoning Haney Serene, the planning and zoning department disregarded the key studies pertaining to Wakefield Street and Haney Serene. The planning and zoning department has eliminated mixed use from Wakefield Street, which has planned development zoning, a version of mixed use. Um, to zone it as residential type of zoning. Even though the zoning has not been officially announced, the draft from the, uh, May second, four meetings indicates future land use map as transitional residential and not mixed use for Wakefield Street.
...as high school graduates. Um, yay. Um, all of whom will be pursuing higher education at various institutions across the country. Um, I couldn't get anybody to go to the University of Tennessee. Maybe next year's class. But we have a few of them here with us today um in representation of the class of 2024. At the beginning of the school year, we explored our mission, vision, and purpose um sitting before the city council. Um, and we talked about how, you know, the youth commission, part of the the purpose of it is to offer community uh for young people to be valued, a safe space. Um, to for them to serve as advisors um to you all and then also uh representation of, you know, their age group. Um, just to give them a voice and let them be a part of decision making um, you know, in the city. And so um I'm proud of this group because this was actually one of the most engaging groups. They were very engaging. Um, and for those who got to come out and 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 witness, um, they are definitely um into what's happening in the city and in the world, and they have questions. Um, so I thank all of our guest speakers that came out throughout the year um to, you know, speak with them and and just took the time uh to talk to them. Uh, so I asked the seniors, um, you know, kind of how we did and what they enjoyed the most about uh being a part of the youth commission. And, you know, three things immediately emerged. One of them was uh creating a sense of community. Um, a space for them to make connections um with other students across Greenville who share a similar interest. Uh, another one was uh connecting with city leadership and also city employees. Um, we are people just like everybody else. Um, so for them learning more about um, you know, what everyone does and how we all work together um to better the city with something that they enjoy. Uh, they also enjoy sharing ideas um and getting feedback um on a, you know, uh, community that, again, uh, one day will be theirs, they will be the adults one day. Uh, one day here soon. Um, so kind of nurturing them, offering them that space um to really give feedback and, again, ask questions in a judgment-free zone. Um, and again, I want to emphasize, those are their words about their experience. What I also want our seniors to know and all of our youth commissioners is that the things that they, the experiences that they had, the takeaways, um, you know, it doesn't go away just because they're walking across the stage. Um, they still have a space with the city of Greenville, whether it's as a future employee, um, whether it's as a city leader, a leader in the community, um, or as a concerned citizen, they have a space here and they always will. This experience added tools um to their toolboxes of success. Um, and so I encourage you all to use them. Uh, whether you realize it or not, um, this was a great experience for you to have. And the connections that you were able to make, the the conversations and interactions that you have um can carry you the rest of your life. Um, we are all here to support you on your journey, whatever it may be, wherever you may go. Um, we are proud, we are rooting for you. Sorry, special group, special group. Um, thank you for your service. And I'll turn it back over to you.
Well, thank you very much. We have some folks who are with us tonight, I'll just ask you to stand when I call your name. I know some are not here, so I'll just run through the list here. Uh, Julia Pesto, attending University of Florida. William Julian Clark, attending Clemson. Jack Burns, attending USC. Braden Freeman, attending SMU. I don't think Braden is. Stella Khan, attending University of Georgia. Lily Flores, Clemson University. Annika Proby, Harvard. Charlotte Paps, attending Auburn. Ariel Ramos, attending Fordham. Emsley Wallace, attending Belmont University. And Clayton Williams, attending the circle. Clayton's enjoying his last night of freedom. Good to have you with us, and we really appreciate y'all's service for the city and look forward to future, future encounters with the city of Greenville and participation, but thank you very much for that. Tonight, we have a special presentation. We appreciate the city manager putting together a good A to Z summary of all the great things we're doing. People tell us all the time who move here from other places that this city is like none other. That seems to be a phrase you hear a lot, and I'd like to think that a lot of the reason we are that is that we are very intentional about what we do. Have the big picture in mind as well as sweat the details. And a lot of what we do that makes us so special and different from other cities in America is reflected in this report tonight. I'd like to think that's the reason we are in such a position with our visions and our our priorities. With that, Shannon, it is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a little bit lengthy, so if anybody would like to leave now, if I'm all moving.
You're gonna start after you attended today, you're gonna start.
That's right. That's right. So I will not be offended if anyone wants to go ahead and leave because this is a little bit lengthy. Um, but thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, City Council. Thank you to our community for the opportunity to provide the state of the city. Um, and for those of the of you who may not know me, I am Shannon Laverne. That's not Larvin, that's not larva, that's not uh Naveen Latrine, it is Shannon Laverne. And I serve as the city manager for the city of Greenville. Welcome to our formal city council meeting. You've come on a special night. A little later, we will be holding second reading on the city's FY 2024-25 budget. And while on its surface, this may seem like a box to be checked or a task to be crossed off. The significance of this process cannot be overstated as it is the policy document that directly guides the future trajectory and well-being of this community. In 2019, at their annual retreat, city council established six focus areas for the city's upcoming fiscal year. The focus areas included infrastructure, neighborhoods, public safety, affordable housing, economic development, and transportation. And the city began strategically directing funding toward those high priority areas in the budget. While those focus areas have been refined somewhat over the past few years, the city's budget is a roadmap that guides our actions and investments, allocating resources to essential services, infrastructure projects, and community programs that shape the quality of life for our residents. Every line item, every dollar spent reflects our priorities, values, and aspirations for the future. It is the most important policy document that a city manager puts forth annually. For this reason, I want to take the opportunity tonight to share the state of the city. As we all know, the past several years, Greenville has experienced a whirlwind of activity, growth, and development. Accolades for our community have continued to pour in, and curious visitors and soon-to-be locals have followed suit. With so much going on, it can be difficult to stop and take stock of where we are. As I stand here, I'm struck by how quickly the past 11 months as your city manager have passed and all that we've been able to accomplish together in this short amount of time. We have much to be proud of, and there are so many people who have helped guide this organization to the enviable position we are in today. All of our accomplishments can be attributed to the visionary leadership of our elected officials, the dedication of our city staff, and our strong community partnerships. As city manager, I had the privilege of witnessing firsthand the passion and commitment that you, our city council members, bring to your roles. And I'm inspired continually by your tireless efforts to the best, to serve the best interests of our community. Your willingness to engage with residents, listen to their concerns, and seek innovative solutions to complex challenges has been instrumental in driving change and progress, and has inspired confidence and unity among our community members, and has fostered a sense of trust and collaboration that is essential for progress and opportunity. Your willingness to collaborate, cooperate, and work together toward common goals has enabled us to achieve remarkable successes and milestones. And your advocacy for your priorities, such as affordable housing, exemplifies your passionate approach to leadership. Additionally, your prudent fiscal management, responsible governance, and transparent decision-making have strengthened our city's financial stability and credibility. In addition to our strong city council, the city of Greenville also has a long history of forging community partnerships and is committed to working with our partners to leverage time, talent, and every available resource. Together, the city and our community partners have been able to realize Greenville's potential and capitalize on opportunities to go beyond the status quo. I want to take this opportunity tonight to thank our numerous partners and partner organizations. Thank you so very much, and there are many, and I will not list them for the sake of time. In recent years, South Carolina has experienced a remarkable surge in population and economic growth, outpacing the nation and attracting attention from all corners of the country. In 2023, South Carolina was the fastest-growing state in the United States, and much of that growth has occurred right here in the upstate. Growth-related issues such as infrastructure strain, traffic congestion, land use, and housing affordability transcend municipal boundaries. Addressing these growth-related issues requires proactive planning, collaboration, and a holistic approach. I want to thank and acknowledge our friends and colleagues from the county and our sister Greenville County municipalities, and applaud them for the great work they are doing. Collaboration among our organizations is essential for maximizing resources, addressing shared challenges effectively, and promoting the overall well-being and prosperity of all of our citizens. And we are grateful for this growth and collaboration and for those partnerships. Greenville is the economic and cultural center of the upstate. Included on countless top-10 lists, Greenville is a safe, vibrant, welcoming community with the many and rarely found in a community of this size. Our mild climate and abundance of natural beauty draw residents and visitors alike, as well as talent and businesses seeking an attractive and quality place to live and work. Our award-winning downtown sets us apart from other communities, and our plentiful public spaces provide endless opportunities for outdoor activities. We offer a thriving arts, entertainment, and cultural scene, as we saw recently with Artisphere, which was recently named the best art festival in the United States by USA Today. Unique dining and shopping options, and year-round events for residents and visitors of all ages. While Greenville has developed into a world-class city, we have retained our unique identity and are dedicated to protecting and preserving those qualities that have earned us so many accolades and make us who we are today. So, who are we? This is the question we posed to the community when we began the planning process for Greenville 2040, the city's comprehensive plan, which you all adopted unanimously in 2021. Rooted in extensive community engagement and feedback, this visionary and award-winning plan outlines our collective aspirations for the next two decades and reflects our shared commitment to shaping a city and a future that benefits all residents. During that process, the community told us that in 2040, they want Greenville to be a place where decisions reflect our values. Our values are put into practice through the application of our planning principles, and we grow in a manner that respects and builds from our assets while helping us achieve significant, which is big, progress on our priorities. Essentially, Greenville 2040's highest priority is to positively impact the most important precondition for sustained vitality in the 21st century: quality of life. Simply put, our primary focus every day is to positively impact the quality of life for all Greenvilleians. This statement guides all our decisions and serves as the theme of our state of the city. Through Greenville 2040, four core values were established to reflect the priorities of the community and serve as a compass for decision-making and policy development. First, we are committed to being an enterprising community. We will take risks, have initiative, and chart our own course. The decisions we make today and in the future shall reflect that we are willing to lead by example and confront our challenges with a spirit of inventiveness and proactivity. Greenville has earned a reputation for its vision and innovation, whether it's seeking creative funding strategies in the Neighborhood Improvement Bond, transforming the city's Economic Development Department into a nonprofit corporation, or creating pilot programs to improve our ability to fund our priorities, such as affordable housing and open space. We continue to demonstrate our willingness to find innovative ways to tackle the challenges we face. Second, we are committed to being a resourceful community. We believe that the community succeeds when we strive to make the most of our greatest strengths and assets, from human capital to natural assets to our history and heritage. In 2023, the city successfully garnered $20 million in state funding to assist with major infrastructure and safety projects, such as the Cultural Corridor, which will transform the section of College and Buncombe Street from Main Street to Heritage Green, from a thoroughfare to an urban street that provides multimodal connectivity, safety, and access. As part of our commitment to preserving and enhancing our existing park and recreation amenities, the city recently completed a $1.3 million renovation of Gower Park, funded in part by a $500,000 grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Additionally, to acknowledge and share the history of the people and the property where Unity Park is located, the city is working with a group of community stakeholders, develop and install educational exhibits at the Prisma Health Welcome Center to help ensure that their stories will be told in their own voices. Third, we are committed to being an inclusive community. The decisions we make must strive to include as many voices and perspectives as possible to ensure outcomes that are more equitable and just. The decisions we make should strongly establish Greenville as an inclusive and welcoming place for all its citizens. Over the past few years, we have made important strides in ensuring that the city provides access, removes barriers, and is inclusive of all community members. In 2023, we hired a chief diversity officer, working out of the city manager's office, to guide the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. All city departments integrated DEI goals into their work plans, and DEI training has been integrated into our onboarding processes, new employee orientation, and supervisory development program. We have increased our municipal equality index score, which measures a municipality's laws and policies to examine how inclusive cities are of LGBTQ+ people. By 12 points, making us one of the highest-ranked cities in the Human Rights Campaigns Review of municipalities in South Carolina. We partnered with the Barbara Stone Foundation's CAN Initiative to develop Access Greenville, an interactive web-based map and database which provides information about the accessibility of downtown restaurants, parking options, and routes from city-owned parking garages to participating restaurants. Our work to make our community accessible and inclusive garnered us the State of South Carolina Department of Disabilities and Special Needs Silver Palmetto Award in February. The Silver Palmetto Award recognizes municipal governments that make the lives of people with disabilities a priority. The city of Greenville was the only city to receive that award this year. And later this year, we will be constructing the city's first inclusive playground in Cleveland Park. We strive to communicate openly and effectively with the community and provide all citizens with opportunities to make meaningful contributions to decision-making, including offering monthly project preview meetings, which give the public a chance to learn about development projects before they are submitted to the city and to be considered by our planning boards, hold, holding community meetings in neighborhoods where changes are being proposed, and utilizing a variety of communication tools to share information and make it more convenient for residents to connect with us. We have no restrictions on public comment in pub, in city council meetings other than a timeframe. Fourth, we are committed to being a courageous community. Our community has demonstrated an ability to make bold decisions that may have been difficult in the moment, but that put the community in a position to succeed well into the future. We must consistently demonstrate such courage going forward and truly commit ourselves to issues we know are important. As a first-time, untested city manager, I'm a good example of the city's willingness to make bold decisions. As an urban planner, I can also confirm that rezoning the entire community, which we did in 2023, was exceptionally courageous and certainly not something that most cities would be willing or able to undertake. In addition to its reputation for innovation, the city is also known for its willingness and success in undertaking public-private partnerships to ensure that our built environment offers access to all Greenvilleians. In the past year, we have approved three public-private partnerships to impact our community differently: a regional headquarters project, a housing project on a 25-year vacant site, and a project that export, that supports expansion of minority and women-owned entrepreneurs. One of the most exciting challenges we're currently facing is reimagining what the future of City Hall looks like for our downtown and our citizens, and we look forward to sharing more about that soon. Spoiler alert, but not tonight. Implementation of a comprehensive plan like Greenville 2040 is not accomplished by passing one or two ordinances, and it will not be achieved by completing a project list. Rather, implementation is a commitment to a process that, by which the values, principles, and priorities embedded in the plan are actively considered and discussed whenever decisions are made. Phase one of Greenville 2040 included a must-do list of six essential tasks that were critical to keeping the implementation of the plan on track. So how did we do? First, Greenville 2040 recommended creation of a consistency policy. This policy is a commitment made by city council to evaluate the degree to which decisions are in accord with the comprehensive plan. You all did this in March 2021. We are unaware of another community in South Carolina holding themselves accountable in this fashion. Second, the complexity of Greenville 2040's implementation task called for a coordinator who is accountable for keeping Greenville 2040 as the basis for our decisions. Following the adoption of Greenville 2040, we redesigned the city's planning department and the Long Range Planning Division, led by Michael Frickson, oversees implementation of Greenville 2040. The third required task was the creation of an economic development strategy that speaks to the vision for growth in Greenville 2040 and will guide the city's actions with respect to Greenville's economy. In 2022, the city created its Economic Development Strategic Plan, identifying key opportunities for partnerships and recommending strategies to offer to foster balanced growth. In late 2023, we created the Greenville City Economic Development Corporation to implement the plan. Fourth, Greenville 2040 spoke to the need for an overhaul of the city's land management regulations, or zoning code, as some may know it, as the most critical step to take on the path toward implementation of the node and corridor growth framework. Incorporation of zoning-based incentives for affordable housing and form-based characteristics to advance open space and transportation goals made this task a critical step for all Greenville 2040 priorities. In 2021, the city embarked on the bold initiative to create the new development code. Building on the guiding principles of Greenville 2040, the new development code represents a fundamental shift in the way Greenville approaches planning and development. As with Greenville 2040, development of the Greenville Development Code involved extensive public engagement, and this collaborative approach resulted in a code that replaces outdated and piecemeal regulations with a modern, comprehensive framework that streamlines the development process and ensures consistency and clarity in decision-making. The new code, which prioritizes affordable housing, open space, and multimodal transportation, provides a unified set of standards and guidelines for developers, property owners, and city officials, and reflects the values, priorities, and aspirations of our community. The development code went into effect in July 2023 and will remain a living, breathing document. The code will be reviewed annually to ensure that it continues to align with our community's changing needs and priorities and that it remains flexible enough to allow the city to respond and adapt to new challenges and opportunities. There are very few cities in this country that could collaborate on the scale that we did as a community. An adoption of the new code is an achievement that we should all be proud of. We listened, we engaged. I believe that when people in 2040 look back on the preceding 20 years, they will determine that the single most impactful thing you all did as a council to positively shape the lives of Greenvilleians was adopting a new development code. The fifth task in the Phase One implementation plan was to identify funding for capital projects recommended by Greenville 2040. If specific capital projects are identified during the course of Greenville 2040's implementation, having a fund established specifically to assist with findings in those projects will be critical to making timely progress. In March 2022, the city created a capital projects program called the Neighborhood Infrastructure Bond to make road improvements, build sidewalks, upgrade transportation management systems, and make park and community center improvements. The NIB represents over $32 million in capital investment to enact the policy set forth in Greenville 2040. The final task was develop, was to develop a detailed framework that outlined the initial criteria by prioritizing vacant land and for acquisition in areas outside of designated nodes. The city conducted a vacant land preservation study in 2022 to identify properties from among the 2,700 acres of undeveloped land in the city that were worth preserving for park use, environmental preservation, or future multi-use transit connections, or reserving for affordable housing. As part of that study, the city established criteria and a scoring matrix for evaluating vacant parcels and created a mapping tool to easily locate vacant lands and priority parcels. Every item on Greenville 2040's Phase One Priority Checklist has been accomplished by you. It's council. I think that they deserve a round of applause. In addition to defining our community's core values through Greenville 2040, we also identified what the community considered Greenville's most pressing issues, the big things that we had to get right in the coming years. The community was clear that they did not want growth to occur at the expense of quality of life. Instead, they wanted us to make significant progress on several important fronts, especially on three priority issues: open space in the environment, transportation and mobility, and affordable housing opportunities. Those issues helped shape and refine council's previous focus areas, and today, city council has five budgeted funding priorities, which you will see reflected in our budget. Three include the the priorities of Greenville 2040, which I will discuss in more depth in a moment, as well as public safety and engagement and economic development. Public safety and engagement. We are committed to providing superior emergency services to residents and businesses that meet the highest professional standards. We conduct city business with transparency and ensure diversity and citizen participation, so voices of all residents are heard. It may surprise you that public safety did not emerge as one of the top three priorities in Greenville 2040. But while Greenville has grown, crime has not. 2023 was the second lowest crime year in the past 10 years, following 2022, and crime has fallen 6% over the past 10 years. The police department had a 72% violent crime clearance rate, which is more than double the national average of 33%. In quarter one of this year, our year-to-date crime data is down 35% from the same time of the prior year. As Greenville grows and we add both citizens and land area, our city continues to be a safe and stable community. Our fire department is one of only 309 agencies worldwide, not in the U.S., but worldwide, to achieve internationally accredited agency status with the Commission on Fire Accreditation International and the Center for Public Safety Excellence. Of those of those, our fire department is one of only 117 agencies worldwide to hold both a Class I I one ISO rating and international accreditation. Now y'all are starting to get a thing like a pop, a lot of popping and roasting. We're good. Now, now we're starting to feel that energy. All right. That's right. To support our public safety departments, the city's new public safety campus located on Halton Road is being renovated. And when it opens later this year, it will house the police department, fire department administration, and municipal court, all of which are currently located in aging, outdated, and cramped facilities. We also have plans to replace the fire station on Stone Avenue with the construction of a new station on Sunflower Street. Public safety accounts for the highest percentage of spending in the city's budget, and the superior service provided by our police and fire departments is one of the most compelling benefits of living in the city of Greenville. The fact that public safety did not rank a wrong, did not rank among the top issues that the community was concerned about during Greenville 2040 shows the community's confidence in our public safety departments. Economic development. In 2023, the city took the monumental step of creating a new economic development arm with its own board of directors and the ability to raise private funding, much like other economic development organizations around the country. The new nonprofit The new nonprofit, called the Greenville City Economic Development Corporation, is charged with implementing the recommendations in the city's Economic Development Strategic Plan and will work collaboratively with the city's economic development partners, such as the Greenville Area Development Corporation, Upstate Alliance, the Greenville Chamber, and the South Carolina Department of Commerce. The board is comprised of citizens from a diverse mix of economic development sectors, and the corporation's new CEO, Sam Condoros, is now on board and is already intertwined with our efforts. Two weeks ago, he and our communications director hosted The Economist to highlight our entrepreneurial space right here in Greenville. Public-private partnerships helped shape Greenville's economy and are part of our history of development. As I mentioned earlier, we are continuing that legacy of PPPs. One longstanding PPP we continue to foster is our relationship with the Greenville Drive. A couple of years ago, we created Field Street pedestrian areas as a PPP, and this year, we completed the Plaza area on Augusta Street. We also have partnered with the drive on a successful parking and transportation plan for the current baseball season. We also believe annexation is an economic development strategy. In 2023, we approved 22 annexations adding 243 acres. In 2024, 272 acres have been annexed. The Cherrydale and Shanna Cleric Golf Course annexations were more acreage combined than all annexations in 2023. Over the past several years, our city limits have grown from 28 square miles to 30.95 square miles. And are we gonna get over 31 tonight, Austin? We're close. We're close. And our permit numbers continue to grow, which attracts companies seeking a thriving community that offers a diverse mix of uses in housing. Last year, our staff reviewed a record number of permits and issued a record number of permits in 2022, followed by 2023, approximately 5,000 applications and close to 7,000 permits issued annually. And contrary to the doom loop, downtowns across the country remain resilient in these times, and there is no better example of such resilience than our downtown. Information shared with us earlier this year shows the strength of our retail market in the downtown core. Greenville 2040 process yielded a consistent message from the beginning about the community's commitment to achieve specific outcomes around the three issues they deemed most important: open space in the environment, mobility and transportation, and affordable housing opportunities. These priority issues are deeply interrelated with each other and include goals that the city has committed to meeting. We are committed to protecting our environment, green space, and natural resources with a focus on clean energy, river quality and restoration, upkeep of our zoo, parks and trail system, and the preservation and growth of our tree canopy. Greenville 2040 established a goal to preserve as much as 35% of Greenville's remaining vacant land as open space or parkland to bolster quality of life and protect environmental assets. After public safety, parks, recreation, and tourism and public works, which were responsible for the maintenance and protection of our natural resources, represent the highest percentages of spending in the city's budget. Under this council's leadership, we have increased the staffing in neighborhood parks, as well as in Cleveland Park, to help maintain two of the city's greatest environmental assets, its largest park and the Reedy River. Our FY25 budget will add another five staff members to Parks, Recreation, and Tourism, and two staff members to Public Works to ensure our maintenance and beautification efforts continue at the level of service our community expects. We are also adding two police officers to our Neighborhood Engagement Team specialized unit who will serve as park police. In the past two years, the city has spent a total of $878,000 and purchased nearly 19 acres of vacant land to preserve as open space. We just purchased 12 acres last month for preservation, and we will continue to look for opportunities to buy land to preserve. Additionally, as open space should be a primary consideration of all developments, Greenville 2040 provided the framework for the development of an open space bonus available to all new development in the city. In 2023, we planted and distributed more than 2,000 trees through our free giveaway events to help increase the tree canopy in both public spaces and our residential areas. So far this year, the city has planted 382 trees and given away 728 trees. We are also concentrating on adding pollinator plants throughout our park system as part of our pledge to help save the monarch butterfly. And one of our more popular initiatives for the community this year is deploying a goat herd to remove invasive species in our neighborhood parks. Additionally, the FY25 budget includes funding for the city's first-ever Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. I knew I'd get a wee bit out of here at some point. Mobility and transportation. We commit to increasing mobility through smart traffic planning, roadway design, expanded public transportation service, and the maintenance and enhancement of existing street, sidewalk, bike lane, and trail networks with over 750,000 Swamp Rabbit Trail users annually. Think about that, 750,000, 10 times the size of the city's population using the Swamp Rabbit Trail annually. The city continues its focus on finding opportunities for expansion of the trail and increasing connectivity from our neighborhoods to the trail. With our carryover and the proposed FY2024/25 budget allocation, we have more than $8 million scheduled for trail funding. In 2023, we completed the Paperclip Route, which connects Cleveland Park to Lawrence Road, and you invested over $5 million in pedestrian bridges over Lawrence and Haywood Roads as part of the extension of the Swamp Rabbit Trail Green Line. Earlier this year, we celebrated the opening of the Legacy Park Swamp Rabbit Trail Connector, which was years in the making and would not have been possible without a public-private partnership. We are currently working to provide safe connections to the trail from the Nickel Town and Gower neighborhoods. As part of our efforts to promote transportation options and enhance Greenville's public transit system, this year's budget includes increased funding for Greenlink to help expand select routes to provide 30-minute service. In June, Greenlink will open its new maintenance facility, which is part of the long-term plan to add more buses and more operators. That's awesome. I'm probably never gonna hear that again. That was great, James. Also, our engineering team is hard at work. The city has almost 100 engineering projects currently in progress, many of which focus on increasing pedestrian and bike safety on our most-used corridors, such as Augusta, Wade Hampton, Stone Avenue, and Pendleton Street. We are currently underway with construction of Phase One of the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan, which involves improving ADA ramps, high-visibility crosswalks, pavement markings, sidewalk repair, and signage along the three corridors and in 10 school zones, with several capital improvement projects to address both vehicular and pedestrian safety along the roads. Some of the key projects include the Augusta Street Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon, which is a new pedestrian signal at Augusta Street and Field Street to create a safe crosswalk connection to Ford Field; Stone Avenue Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon, new pedestrian signal at Stone Ave. and Wilton Street to improve a crosswalk within a school zone; Augusta Street Streetscape Phase Two Traffic and Pedestrian Improvements along a two-mile section of Augusta from Church Street to Malden Road; Old Augusta Road Safety Improvements Sidewalk High Visibility Crosswalks and Speed Tables on Old Augusta Road between Potomac Ave. and Blythe. Yay! Wade Hampton Boulevard Traffic and Multimodal Pedestrian Improvements on a 1.7-mile section of Wade Hampton Boulevard between Church Street and North Pleasantburg; Stone Avenue Safety Improvements Traffic and Pedestrian Improvements along Stone Avenue from Pete Hollis Boulevard to I-385; Cultural Corridor Pedestrian Streetscape Enhancements on College Avenue from Main Street to Heritage Green. Moreover, we are coordinating with SCDOT on several roadway safety audits. These studies evaluate vehicular and pedestrian safety strategies, and we are currently focused on Rutherford and Pointset Highway, River Street, Dunbar Street, and Wade Hampton Boulevard. Additionally, two weeks ago, I signed expansion plans for the B-cycle Program to provide relief for the system's busiest location at Unity Park. The plan, which was developed by our city staff, includes 23 new bikes and docks. And earlier this year, I signed an e-bike policy for our employees, specifically to allow for our PRT team to use bikes to travel from location to location without having to use a vehicle. And last, but most importantly, the one y'all have all been waiting for: affordable housing. Oh, boy. Here we go. Affordable housing is a cornerstone of our vision for Greenville's future. It really is, and it remains the primary concern for all of us. Greenville 2040 established a goal to make at least 10% of all new housing in Greenville income restricted to preserve access to high-quality affordable housing. While the city has a decades-long history of working with our community partners to build new affordable housing and preserve our existing affordable housing inventory, the 2016 Housing Study: Balancing Prosperity and Housing Affordability in Greenville was a pivotal moment that shed light on the pressing challenges facing the city's housing landscape. Armed with the knowledge gleaned from the housing study, city leaders and stakeholders embarked on a multifaceted approach to address Greenville's affordable housing crisis, including creating the Greenville Housing Fund, which is responsible for working with the city and all our key partners to increase and preserve the supply of a variety of safe, accessible, high-quality affordable housing choices for the citizens of Greenville County. Since 2019, more than 1,528 affordable housing units have been constructed. There are more than 400 un... There are more than 400 units that have been preserved, and more than 800 units are in the pipeline, either in planning, permitting, or construction. We just celebrated the Greenville Housing Fund's $5.5 million investment to preserve existing affordable housing units at Century Plaza 10 days ago. Since the city doesn't build houses, not yet anyways, there's always next year. We must employ a variety of tools to support our housing partners and further our affordable housing goals. To begin, the city provides $2.5 million per year to the Greenville Housing Fund. That's just to the housing fund. Additionally, thanks to an ongoing contribution agreement approved by city council in 2023, Truist Bank approved a $12 million loan, which is the first of a total allocation of $30 million to the Greenville Housing Fund to accelerate affordable housing projects and establish a reserve fund. The city has funded the Greenville Housing Fund with more than $17 million in cash and land donations alone. We also provide land to be used for the development of affordable housing. To date, we have donated a total of 16.7 acres to our partners such as United Housing Connections, Homes of Hope, Genesis Homes, and Habitat for Humanity. The estimated value of that land is approximately $11.3 million. And in August, we renewed a lease of $1 a year at the city's Green Avenue Multi-Service Building in the adjacent land, so our partners at Rebuild Upstate can deploy their resources on preserving houses and not on renting homes or renting offices. Other key strategies include adding a bonus height incentive in the new development code for developers whose projects include at least 10% of the units at 60% of the area median income, or 15% of the units at 80% of the area median income for affordable housing; waiving permit-related fees for affordable housing projects, such as the Riley at Overbrook and Gateway at the Green; offering fee-in lieu of options for developers whereby the fees go directly to support affordable housing initiatives; providing $1.45 million in grant funding through our Community Development Division, and that's been since 2020 for affordable housing projects. Their annual allocation also goes to support other things, so we broke it down based on the total. The city also received a Section 108 Housing and Urban Development Loan for over $3.5 million to invest in infrastructure for affordable housing in the city's special emphasis neighborhoods. A new funding strategy the city is actively pursuing is the use of accommodations tax money. Act 57, which was signed by Governor McMaster last year, allows municipalities to use a percentage of those funds toward the development of workforce housing. We are currently one of five cities out of 271 cities in the state of South Carolina that are pursuing this strategy, one of five. The city recently deployed $900,000 of those funds to purchase property near Unity Park to preserve for the development of workforce housing. And the city has engaged a local housing expert to assist staff with the development of a housing impact analysis, which must be in alignment with Greenville 2040 to help us understand what gaps we can help fill using those funds. In addition to our affordable housing efforts, the city is also providing support for our community partners who are working to address the issue of homelessness in our community. Last year, over $260,000 was deployed for a homeless outreach team to assist with connecting individuals experiencing homelessness to resources. Additional funding is included in this year's budget for the first time to support individuals experiencing homelessness and our service provider partners. We actually have it called out as a line item in this year's budget. For us, it is about being creative and identifying ways that we can deploy alternative forms of revenue for affordable housing. In FY25, we are proposing the following: $299,000, $299,732,000 for our home program; $450,400 in our HAPWA program; and $704,000 in our CDBG program; $598,000 in our Philo Pilot Project that you all approved under the Austin Park Pilot Project Program; we have a foregone revenue of $2,696,000 that's on taxes related to some of our land donations; we have $751,181,000 in the budget for affordable housing and homeless support initiatives; $2.5 million to the Greenville Housing Fund; we are anticipating waiving fees of upwards of $300,000 for building permits related to affordable housing projects; we're planning to use 20% of our tree fund towards affordable housing, which is over $1.2 million right now, so we have it as a conservative estimate of $200,000. We have $1,043,340,000 of our local ATAX in the budget for workforce housing; we have $375,000 in the budget for workforce housing; we have another $150,000 in our police department's budget to support United Housing Connections; and we have land acquisition... And we have land acquisition of the fair market value of properties that we've recently purchased, including the property on Washington Street and the property on Dunbar Street that we paid $3.2 million for that we will donate this year. Our fair market value of land to be donated is over $3 million, $3,000,717,826 that we will donate for affordable housing. Through community development, we are anticipating $1.45 million.
Shannon, you didn't give the grand total.
Yes, sir. Are you ready? Where's the drum roll? There might be some other dollars later, so... But right now, we're at $10,392,444. Through community development, we are anticipating $1.44 million. The land donation... The land donation dollars include the property on West Washington Street, the Dunbar parcel that has been committed to be used for affordable housing, and we took only the FMV of that, of what we can actually use, not, we didn't include the whole parcel where the road is going, and the value of the land we still have to donate to our affordable housing partners. These dollars are conservative, and hear me when I say that. We took a very conservative estimate because they do not contemplate our other land that we have yet to donate to decide what we want to do with, including our Green Plaza site or our Mayberry Street sales. Money that may come from other partners, such as the GLDC, that gifted the Greenville Housing Fund $200,000 last year. And additionally, as projects present themselves, there's the potential of additional dollars being used from funds such as our parking fund. These numbers do not include other potential land purchases or more funds from grants, fees, et cetera. For example, we may end up with additional ATAX dollars to use. And we know that we're every day looking for land to buy for affordable housing. This is our conservative estimate, but at the end of the year, we will know more. For the first time, our team has compiled a running list of all affordable housing expenditures and values that allows us to have a better handle on our overall city investment. Thank you, Patricia. According to the American Planning Association, I'm sorry, I'm a planner. I had to quote them at least once. Developers are anticipating a major drought in affordable housing production by 2025, and that's primarily due to soaring costs of materials and rising interest rates. For those of us on the front lines of this issue every day, money is not the only answer. Partnership, creativity, mindfulness, and accountability are required. We each must have a personal stake in the issue, and we should all reflect on what we personally are doing for affordable housing. There isn't a day that goes by that city council or the city manager's office or the city staff are not doing something to advance support for affordable housing. When a permit needs to be expedited, we do it. When a fee needs to be waived, we do it. When a last-minute inspection is required, we do it. When a support letter is needed for state housing, we do it. When connections to resources are needed, we create a community resource fair. We do it. When site plans need our professional design help, we do it. When legislation is on the table for anything related to affordable housing, we go to Columbia, we do it. When supporting information is needed for low-income housing tax credit projects, we do it. When a funding, when a partner has a funding gap, we step up, we do it. When a neighborhood meeting is needed, we go and sometimes we host, we do it. Whatever issues arise, we are there. Advancing affordable housing construction is not for the faint of heart. The single issue that gives me the most joy is seeing projects that almost died succeed. Without a doubt, there were times when both the Riley at Overbrook and Gateway at the Green, projects for individuals and families under 60% AMI that broke ground in late 2023 and early '24, were not going to make it. But when our partners needed us, we were there. Every so often, people send me handwritten notes. If y'all haven't done that, you should try. It's very nice. I save every one. I save every one. I frame them and put them in my office. From one I received last fall. Shannon, thank you for the play on permit issuance your team did on that project for our project last month. This is for Betty. 20 years in construction and development, and I've never had a municipality step up like you all did. When this development goes forward, it will be a result of your staff making that possible. Thank you. See, Tamika, I get upset a little bit too when I talk about people I care about. Yep. Money alone cannot and will not fix affordable housing. Strategies include using faith-based organizations' land for affordable housing, practicing gentle density, and eliminating reducing parking minimums, all of which we are now doing. We adopted an accessory dwelling ordinance, and there are 13 in process across the city. We can waive fees and expedite permits, we're doing it, and we are committed to doing more. For example, we continue to look for alternate funding solutions. Have asked staff to see what our options are for diverting a percentage of additional city permit fees to affordable housing. It takes teamwork, it takes commitment, it takes passion, it takes dedication. It's remembering during the very tough times our values to be resourceful, enterprising, inclusive, and courageous. We have accomplished a great deal over our last year together. There are quite a few items, so for the sake of time, I won't read these, but I'm going to make y'all read them. But please take a moment to look at some of the accomplishments of the past year.
This was just last year, Shannon.
This is last year. That's right. Wow. That's good. Right. This is where it gets fun. This is where it gets fun, I think, I hope. All right. So what is next for us and what is our call to action? To answer this, we turn to Greenville 2040 in the second implementation phase. First, we must evaluate the performance of the new development code and its effectiveness. When the new development code was adopted in July of 2023, we committed to reviewing it every six months for the first year and annually after that. We have completed our first six-month review, and we will soon begin the process for the second six-month review. Really proud of us for sticking to that commitment. In 2020, complete and began implementation of the first node plans. In 2023, City Council adopted the Airport District Planning Study, which provides a 15-year comprehensive strategy for the areas surrounding the downtown airport, including the Greenville Convention Center that is bordered by I-385, Haywood Road, Warren's Road, and Pleasantburg Drive. Building upon the recommendations of the study, an approximately 10-acre property adjacent to the Swamp Rabbit Trail Green Line extension will become a new wheel park that will include both a skate park and a paved pump track. Additionally, as part of the project, a 4.5-mile loop trail will be constructed along the edge of the downtown airport. Money to begin both projects is included in this year's budget. Third, select nodes for subsequent rounds of small-area planning and implementation. Greenville 2040 identifies two nodes in West Greenville, and I'm excited to share that as part of our FY25 work plan, the city's planning staff will begin development of a small-area plan for the entirety of West Greenville. At the same time, thanks to our friends at the state of South Carolina, we will begin the design phase to replace the West Greenville community center. But with me, I- continuing land acquisition. We have made that commitment, and this year purchased over 16 acres for open space preservation. We need to lean into our ability to employ public-private partnerships to achieve greater preservation. We need to do more. I am challenging our staff to preserve 20 acres this year. We must initiate management of acquired land and include parkland development. While large-scale parks like Cleveland Park and Unity Park are important, we also recognize that access to green spaces within our neighborhoods enhances the overall quality of life for our residents. Our goal is to provide every resident with access to a park, trail, or similar amenity within a half-mile of their home. I'm happy to say that we will soon be a little closer to attaining that goal with the creation of new parks on existing vacant city parcels, thereby formally dedicating this land as permanent park space. These parcels are in the Nickel Town and Sherwood Forest neighborhoods. I want to do one. Congratulations, PRT! It is critical to, number six, it is critical to ensure that tree preservation and replenishment efforts consistently reach targeted goals to plant 1,000-plus trees every year. Thanks to the great work of our Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department under the guidance of Tara Aker and Stacy Schaefer, we planted and gave away more than 2,000 trees last year. Additionally, as part of the new development code, we updated our tree ordinance to allow 20% of the funds that we collect through our fee-in lieu of program to be used to support affordable housing developments, so 20% of our tree fund. We must begin development of small-area plans for each emerging node and the corridors that connect them. County Square is also one of the nodes identified in Greenville 2040, and we are currently in the process of developing a master plan for the adjacent Haney Serene neighborhood. A large percentage of Haney Serene land is vacant, and it is imperative that we act now, working in concert with the residents who live there to preserve the character of this neighborhood. With the $3.2 million purchase of land for the Dunbar Street connection almost completed, what opportunities lie ahead for us, the city, to be in lockstep with the neighborhood on the future development of this area? The master plan will require additional investment from the city, and we should be ready to take action for implementation following its adoption later this year. We also need to consider the infrastructure challenges in Green Line Spartanburg and how we will respond and invest in the recommendations of that small-area plan once it is completed late this fall.
Amen.
Equally important in our update of the city's zoning code was the design of city streets. In conjunction with the new development code, the city also updated its engineering design and specifications manual, which establishes minimum standards and provides guidance for the design and construction of land development projects within the city. Following the success of our airport small-area plan, this year's corridor focus will be Pleasantburg Drive. Okay, we're in the homestretch. Everybody, just a couple more things. There are a few big projects on the horizon that I want to mention. As we all know, our downtown is expanding, and the need to provide additional parking options in the West End became more pressing with the loss of the county square office lot, surface lot. This is a high-priority project, and we are continuing to explore multiple options, including construction of a new parking facility in the West End. Also, we are beginning the process of reimagining our city hall, which, as you can see, hasn't changed much since the '70s. This next year, we have the opportunity to improve our work environment for our employees and change the way this building interacts with the spaces around us. Our goal is to make city hall more inviting for our citizens by increasing the accessibility. And we are excited to finally move forward with a neighborhood design center, something this council first requested in 2021. We want a storefront for planning and design because we believe that competent and thoughtful urban design, architecture, and landscape architecture results in strong and resilient towns. Our goal is to proactively engage the public in our neighborhoods and the planning, design, and creation of their communities. We want to create an intentional environment to foster collaboration. This year, we will rebuild two of our community centers, Southern Side and Viola. We will be adding a fifth recycling center at Rutherford Road and a yard waste burner to keep costs under control. And we have a busy summer ahead. We will start with our upcoming Greenville Jazz Fest, expanded now to a two-day event. We will be opening our new parks maintenance facility at Unity Park and our Halton Road Public Safety Campus. The GreenLink maintenance facility opens, and we will break ground for the Unity Park Honor Tower on June 11th. We will also celebrate the 20th anniversary of Falls Park. Our zoo accreditation will occur this summer, and following passage of this year's budget, sustainability is moving to the city manager's office.
All right.
As I mentioned earlier, this budget is a focus on people and positively impacting all Greenvilleians. Protecting the health, safety, and welfare of our community is our primary charge, and we know that parks and open spaces can improve physical and mental well-being. So we are going on the trail. I'm excited to announce that beginning this fall, our PRT director will join me in launching our community walk, community park walks. This initiative will provide a unique opportunity for us to engage with the community outdoors in a fun, informal way to talk with and learn from each other. We will also be taking on new engineering projects, working on the Verde Bridge to CUICAR, fully funding InStep, banking money for Wade Hampton and Augusta Street improvements, and moving from design on East North Street to implementation. So with all of this going on, how do you and our residents keep up with what we're doing? The city has been regionally recognized as an innovator in municipal government outreach and engagement. Our communications department is part newsroom, part marketing agency. We have three reporters and two videographers who cover city events and initiatives and present their stories on our social media channels for citizens to get their information from the experts and straight from the source. We also have an award-winning, we can review video that has been expanded to a community newsletter available in English and Spanish, which you can sign up to receive by text each week. Our communications team has more followers on social media than the cities of Los Angeles and Philadelphia. If Greenvilleians want to know what is happening here at the city, they need to look no further than our own City of Greenville reporting outlets.
All right.
I want to conclude tonight's remarks, I thought, you probably thought I was never going to get there, with a thank you to the incredible staff of the city of Greenville.
Amen.
Our team worked hard this year to present a budget that addressed all of your priorities. First, I'm- First, I want to recognize and thank Patricia Dennis, the city's chief financial officer, and Christina Junker, our budget administrator, for their exceptional work. We have an award-winning budget team who are outstanding stewards of our public resources. And let's not forget Ms. Karen Crawford, who got us through many, many a time. It is in part because of them, people like Patricia, Karen, Christina, that our city is in such a strong financial position. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Greenville is the only city in South Carolina, and I've said it once, I'm gonna keep saying it, to have a AAA rating from all three credit rating agencies, the only city in South Carolina. The city is also a winner of the Government Finance Officers Association's Triple Crown, which recognizes governments that have received GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, Up Your Annual Financial Reporting Award, and Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. I wish I had time tonight to share with all of you the accolades for our city staff. Every member of the city's senior leadership team is with me for the second time. We already know you'd be making a repeat performance. We will be publishing a document on our website soon with all of their departmental accomplishments and wins. For many of us, service is more than just a job. It's a calling. Senior leadership team, thank you for your service. You make a difference every day. Over the past 10 months, you've rallied around me as a city manager, and I'm honored to serve with you. While there will always be challenges, there's so much more excitement and opportunity for us right now. What we have right now is very special. City Council, our promise to you is that we will do our best. Senior leadership team, my promise to you is I will do my best. I depend on you, and we, the city council, residents, visitors, depend on you and your teams with my deepest appreciation. Thank you. I'll leave you with this. We must continue to focus on the need for affordable housing. We must continue engaging the community. We must continue to provide a safe community. We must continue to maintain our infrastructure and protect our natural resources. We must continue to provide a variety of transportation options. Together, let's continue to build a Greenville where everyone is welcome. Let's continue to be a city where we are united and even in discourse, find our way to collaboration. Let's continue to be a city that is equitable and inclusive and where every decision positively impacts the quality of life for all. And like the leaders that who came before us, let's continue to look for opportunities to push boundaries, challenge conventions, and redefine what is possible. I hope you will welcome and accept these challenges as motivation and inspiration for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, butts. Manager, appreciate it. Word that comes to my mind is alignment. We have wonderful alignment between elected officials and what we're trying to accomplish in our residence, and our city manager, and our city staff. Can't, you can't make that up or make it happen when it's not, when it doesn't exist. So thank you for that and where everybody is in that, in that effort, everyone on our staff in particular. Some of you have been here a long time when things were not so aligned with this body and this mayor, et cetera, et cetera. But the alignment is now in good hands, and we appreciate it so much. But most importantly, our great residents of our city who like what we're doing, frankly, and appreciate the direction we're headed makes it all possible. We have a consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Regular agenda, 15A.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.19 acre real property and 0.04 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 12 Dorsey Boulevard and to provide the zoning designation of RH-D House D District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15B.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.2 acre of real property located at 7 Traction Street and to provide the zoning designation of RH-D House D District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15C.
An ordinance to annex approximately 5.0 acres of real property and 0.72 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at Fork Shoals Road and East Old Fork Shoals Road and to provide the zoning designation of RH-B House B District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
You're good.
I mean.
I have a statement. I'm just gifted.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.57 acre of real property and 0.08 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 2, 4, and 8 Mission Street and to provide for the zoning designation of RH-D House D District.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15E.
Ordinance to annex approximately 1.89 acres of real property and 0.65 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 401 Guest Street and to provide the zoning designation of RNX-C Neighborhood Flex C District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
Austin. I may make stations tonight, Austin.
Yeah, very fine, very fine. All very strategic, too, so thank you very much for that. 16A.
A resolution to designate $3,412,500 from the State Accommodations Tax Fund for the purpose of providing financial assistance for events and projects as recommended by the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
A point of privilege, Mr. Mayor, on that point, only because ATAX has gotten a lot of scrutiny and lenses on it. You know, this is the money that's generated when people stay in our hotels, or in theory, our Airbnbs. And just for some numbers, we are granting tonight within 10% of what was requested by me running rough numbers, Patricia, okay? It is also a 23% increase over what was granted last year in grants. That's huge, 23% increase. And for workforce housing, this year versus last year, a 57% increase from accommodations tax. So with that said, we are using tourism tax revenue to reinvest and serve the people who live here. And the growth year over year is remarkable, and I just commend the committee that sat through all the presentations. I hope that information is shared with all the people who weren't here tonight to hear about all the things we're doing towards affordable housing. And I'm just really thankful for all the support from staff in getting us to this point, and excited for all the money we're going to make Greenville even better.
That's it? I had another item on my agenda, and that wasn't on the final agenda. Okay.
Just want to make an observation that is clear that our city manager cares deeply about her staff, and that is tremendous, and really appreciate that very, very much. However, I will say that as you got a little choked up, the way you got yourself out of that is you started talking about city council.
Appreciate it very much.
Seven or five.
Shannon is still out for adoption of the, to memorialize the recommendation of the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee.
Oh, I thought we did.
Yeah, we voted on it.
We did.
Oh, you did? Okay. You offered so quick.